July 20th. We have in attendance Paul White, and I'm recording this because currently I am the secretary, so we have double duty tonight. Ryan Thompson, Jay Johnson, and Paul Bush, and myself, Debbie Hone. Have everybody stand please before we plug in the comments. Mr. Bush, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 22nd. I do have a few notations on this. Board present, we had, we need to add Ryan Thompson and Ron Eaton, so a total of five board numbers. Under the approval of the minutes, we had Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Eaton, and not Mr. Bush.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the approval of the agenda, we have a motion by Mr. White, approved by Mr. Eaton. And other than a misspelling on case V-21-06, in that paragraph, seventy-three acre parcel into two residential parcels.
Very thorough.
Your toe's not okay?
Very thorough.
Other than that, do I have a motion to approve them as amended, or if anybody else has any other comments?
So move for approval.
We've got Mr. Bush, and signed in by...
I'll take it.
Mr. Johnson. All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Motion carries. We have the approval of the agenda for this evening.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we've got Mr. White, supported by...
Support.
Mr. Bush. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Just for the record on this meeting, Mr. Smith, you would like me to kind of go over these because we haven't done that in a little while.
Please.
Okay. So rules for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board shall provide their name and mailing address, and that's for our records. Individuals will be allowed three minutes. Associations or group representatives will be allowed five minutes. Time may not be yielded to other speakers. Speakers will address the chairperson. And comments shall be made in a professional manner. So in other words, if you have anything to say, it needs to go through this board and not with each other. We don't want a fistfight. Any other communication?
No, just, Madam Chair, just one comment on the, on the public comments. You also have a public hearing tonight, and that, and that's, so that's a different opportunity, I guess, for people to talk about just items directly on the agenda. And for that, I think that those rules may apply, but you as the chairperson have to decide, you have the latitude to extend time or limit time. So just, just keep in mind that, that the public comments typically are for anything anyone wants to talk about, and then the public hearings for that item.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. And on that note, does anybody have anything they'd like to speak on that has nothing to do with this official case? All right, we'll move on. Thank you. Communications, none. No unfinished business? New business, we have election of officers. We've got three positions: Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Does anybody want to elect themselves, or anybody else? Mr. White is our trustee representative. Mr. Johnson is our planning commission representative. Mr. Bush is an alternate, so he is officially not qualified for an officer's position.
So I went by default? Is that your...
All right, do we have any takers on officers?
I would nominate Ms. Hone to be the chairperson.
Mr. Thompson is vice chair, then.
Okay. That sounds great.
Anybody...
Which leaves who for secretary, then? Well, somebody that's not here, so who is it?
Mr. Eaton.
There you go. I nominate Mr. Eaton for secretary.
Jay can be as well.
I, I will say, I'm not probably the best person to be taking. So...
Put Ron.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'll work.
All right. All right, so on the table, we've got, chairperson is Debbie Hone. Vice Chair is Ryan Thompson. And Secretary, unbeknownst to him, is Mr. Ronnie. We need, I'm assuming, a formal vote on that. So all those in favor, for as I have read them, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. As far as officers, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I had Mr. White as moving that slate, and then Mr. Bush seconding it, so, okay, thanks.
All right, that leads us into our public hearing this evening. Case V-21-007, Dimensional Variance. Purpose of this hearing is to receive comments from the public for a variance request for vacant land, PID, and I don't need to read all the numbers there, Grand Blanc. Based on section 4.14, attached single-family dwelling units, not more than fifty percent of any wall shall be a common party wall. Eighteen-foot offset is required for this application, and four foot is requested. In other words, a fourteen-foot variance. Applicant wishes to construct attached single-family dwellings. And I see Mr. Ferretta here to represent. Please state your name and address, just for the record.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Ferretta. 410 East Court Street, Flint, Michigan, 48503. I was Cedric in Ferretta Auto Sales. And what we're here for tonight, so the, well, should pop up here in one second. There we go. What we're looking to do, is we're looking to do a townhome development off of McCandish. And maybe we'll kind of, let's kind of go for just a little bit of the background here. This is the site location on McCandish. It's by the old golf course. And we have seven point nine acres. Right here is, is the intent. When we started deciding what we were going to do with the development, we decided to do townhomes. And this is the design vision for the townhome. So the idea is to emulate something like this for our development. And we started to put together some size, sizes, and the size development. So on this, we're allowed to put approximately seventy-nine units. In this case, we're showing seventy-four. As we started to develop the property, we started looking through the ordinance. Buildings can't be any more than one hundred and eighty feet long, so that kind of determined the length of our building. And as we started going through the ordinance, we found out that in the ordinance, it stated that we couldn't do any more than fifty percent of our wall could be common. So taking our plan and looking at that, we said, all right, can we do it? So we started to lay that out, and that's here, what would be on the right-hand side. Let me try to get a little, eh, I'm not quite smooth with the mouse, but, okay. So, so as we started to lay it out, we could get the development put together, and this is the eighteen-foot offset. Now, one, it doesn't meet our vision. That, I'm sure, as a variance, we don't care about. And we started to look at it, and we, what we really noticed is right here in the dark green area. The dark green area, by having the eighteen-foot offset meeting the setback, so we're right on the setback in the back, we're on the setback in the front of McCandish. The way this is designed is that the front door faces McCandish in this, and then the back door has the garage. We set it up so that, and we've done different variations, and there's lots of things been going back and forth. So we went to the planning commission for our initial meeting at the last planning commission. We had two separate plans. They had different layouts. The planning commission recommended that we go with this one. They felt that it best would work with the area. They were the most pleased with it. The planning commission felt they liked our vision, and they also liked the plan that we were proposing, which had the four-foot offset versus the eighteen-foot offset. If we needed to go percentages, the ordinance states fifty percent, and I believe we worked it out that the, it would be actually a ten percent is what we're requesting. So requesting to go from fifty percent to ten percent, or eighteen to four feet. On the left-hand side, you can see that this is what we're asking for. So if we can line the buildings up, we have a four-foot offset in the front of each building, then we have a lot more green space. And in the plan that does not require variance, we have eighteen feet of green space for park. In this case, we have sixty, sixty feet of green space for a park, times the length, which is, I think, approximately one hundred and eighty feet each, broken up by, you know, our circulation through. So that's what we're asking for. As far as variance, what we'd like to do here, the variance we're asking for isn't increasing the amount of buildings that we have. What it does is it reduces the amount of asphalt impervious area. That's always a good thing in Genesee County with the rules that we have. The ordinance, your ordinance basically leans towards, we like green space. And so what we said is, how do we meet the, the intent of your ordinance? Well, we'd have to request a variance. So if we request this variance, and we get that, we're not asking to increase the number of units that we're providing. We're still meeting the vision that we showed the planning commission, but we are able to provide more green space. And that's the whole reason we're here tonight, and the variance we need, is that we're looking to provide more green space. If you'd like, we've done a little bit of schematic, where we're showing what the developments are going to be like. On the right-hand side is the option where we have to split it eighteen feet. On the left is where we have the offset. This much more fill, fulfills the vision of what we were trying to do, which is the design vision in the upper left-hand corner. So at this point, I can talk a whole lot more about a whole lot of things. Why don't I open it to your questions, or Jeremy, if you have a report?
Thank you very much. It's time to leave the board, and ask any questions or comments to the applicant.
So what do I have in my packet? Because my packet doesn't match either one of those site plans.
Yeah, so the difference is, we moved the sidewalks from along the parking back, and we added the parking, which were requests by the planning commission. And if you'd like...
So you're, you're asking for a variance on this diagram, not the ones you're presenting?
Pardon?
My, my picture of your site plan does not match either one of those drawings.
Yeah, they match this which here's on the screen now. And the difference is, we moved the sidewalk from here along the street back, so that we could have contiguous open space.
So as a clarification...
And that's the difference of what we're asking for.
As a clarification, we are here to grant, or not grant, the variance request and not look at a plan. We're actually not approving the plan, yeah, tonight.
Okay, I got you, but I'm just trying to visualize what he's really asking for.
Yep.
My drawing doesn't match what he's presenting.
So what I'm showing now is what we presented at the planning commission, which is what we sent to you. So as soon as we went to the planning commission, to be have, be able to send your packets out, we had to send things out the next day. What I was showing you today, we're picking up on the things that were recommended to us by the planning commission. So this is what we showed the planning commission.
Okay.
Was this. And then this is the, the eighteen-foot offset. So you can see that we still have a lot less green space here.
That's what I'm kind of trying to clarify. That's what the code says.
That's what the code says.
To do that. That's allowable.
Yep. And we're asking to do this, which provides more green space. Now, when we met with the planning commission, they said, man, we really don't like those sidewalks. We're like, yeah, that makes sense. We could create a really nice park here if we didn't have those sidewalks. So we pushed the sidewalk back up here. That's what we did, and that's what the new drawing would show up here. This, we just pushed the sidewalks up, and we made the green a little bit darker, so you could see what we're talking about today.
That's all I was trying to clarify.
Yep, absolutely. So I'm happy to show this, if that makes sense. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I just want to reiterate a little bit what happened at the planning commission. It was a late night, this was the last thing on the agenda. And we saw four site plans, four incarnations of this particular plan. And as Mr. Ferretta said, the one with the eighteen feet, with all sea of concrete and no green space, the planning commissioners really didn't like that plan. We talked about the sidewalks in the middle, Mr. Thompson talked about how they're not on the plan tonight. He took them off, I think, at the request of the planning commission. However, I agree with your thought process that we are voting on a variance. But however, in this instance, we are voting on a site plan, because if this variance isn't granted, we are getting the site plan that you see, period. And there's no option. So I think our option here tonight is to really look at the site plan, because if we don't, then it is what it is, and there's no opportunity to look at it at, at the planning commission level. And, and I know that the chairman of the planning commission even said that maybe this is backwards, the way we do it. Because this body tonight determines what this site plan looks like. So if we want to see a concrete and no green space, then that's, then that's, that's our flavor. I think the option, and what our challenge is today, is to decide if green space is a more viable option for the residents going to purchase in this community.
Any other comments before I go to Mr. Smith for the report? All right, that's just that.
Thank you. So upon review of the subject requests for variance referenced above, the summary of the findings is presented now. The subject properties are vacant on McCandish Road, east of Saginaw Street. All three parcels are zoned R1 residential, single-family currently. The subject parcels are approximately seven point nine acres combined. Section 4.14.1, the township zoning ordinance requires parcels zoned multifamily constructed, attached building units have a fifty percent offset common party wall. The applicant is requesting a reduction to ten percent or four feet offset, which would be a fourteen-foot variance where eighteen foot is required. After talking with the applicant and reviewing multiple site plans, applicant has chosen a plan that does not comply with the zoning ordinance for the offset of the common party wall. The applicant has the ability to construct a site plan that does conform with the required ordinance of fifty percent common party offwall offset, thus not requiring a variance. If standards in my report, all six of these standards need to be met in order to grant this variance. The township would recommend denial for the variance request based on the following reasons: The applicant has not proven a hardship or practical difficulty, and two, the applicant has the ability to construct the site plan without needing a variance.
Anybody got any questions or comments on the case this time?
I, I do. I agree. Why, why are we coming on the back end of this? Like, if the planning commission's already said one thing, and we would deny it, then why, why, it just doesn't make any sense procedurally, why we're going this route.
Unfortunately...
This is not really your fault, this is more of me just being like this.
It's not, and unfortunately, this, I have to go by what the book tells me to do. The, the, there's intro meetings in the book that they have to be done first for rezoning, then this came up. It is kind of out of the ordinary, but the book tells us what we have to do, unfortunately. I'm in the process of talking with Mr. Limada, our superintendent, and Scott Bennett, supervisor. There's, all of these sticky notes that you see here in my book here are things that, you know, I've only been here four months, so this is the things that I see. And part of that clarification and cleaning some of this stuff up is in my, in my procedures that we're going to be doing eventually, but that could be six months down the road before we can get to all of those. So unfortunately, we are dealt the hand that we are right now, and unfortunately, it is what it is.
Mr. White?
Well, I have one more question that I think leads to even more uncertainty. That is that this site plan is proposed in an MDM district, and it's, I think you said it was residential R1 district. So this whole thing is hypothetical. It's not, it, it isn't zoned for this, as you sit here tonight. And so they're gonna need a read, they're gonna need to petition for a rezoning request. So this thing is far from a done deal.
And that's what the planning commission is for. Eventually, that's their next step. If this gets approved today, then they will be going, the next step is to go for conditional rezoning is still the plan, correct?
Correct.
So the conditional rezoning, they have to tie a site plan to the rezoning request to move forward. They don't have to tie it, they can do a rezoning without the conditional, but I, from past practices, that's been what has been required, just because it, the township has been burnt in the past with just a straight rezoning, and especially going to multifamily, this is the best-looking option in an MDM that I've seen in a long time. You could put apartment complexes in here. If it went MDM, and if you didn't tie a site plan to it, then there's nothing you could do about it. So the rezoning is the next step, but unfortunately, that's down the line still.
So the first step is getting a dimensional variance, as you're questioning?
Correct.
Whether or not we can tie a site plan to that or not?
The variance you don't, the rezoning you will, that the planning commission, they will be tying a site plan to that rezoning request.
Would it merely not be what's presented tonight?
Correct. So Madam Chair, what we have to do is, to get the rezoning we're requesting, we have to submit a site plan. If we were going for general rezoning, we wouldn't have to submit a site plan, we'd get the zoning, and then we'd submit whatever we wanted, kind of thing. So to do what we want to do, we need the variance to do what we want to do to get a rezoning plan. If we decide to do, once we get rezoning, if we submit something to the planning commission as far as a site plan after that, we'll have to go then and rezone it again. Because the rezoning will match that site plan. So if we change the site plan from that point, we'll have to go back to rezoning and site plan. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we're not, you know, there's no fast one. It's not, we're going to do this, and then you see apartments going up on the block the next month. So that's why we're going for the conditional zoning. So you know, this is exactly what we plan on doing.
And even the site, Madam Chair, just the site plan that he's showing today is still compliant with what was submitted and what was noticed in the paper. So just because the site plan's different doesn't negate the fact that he's trying to do the same variance today.
Anybody else that's going to call a comment? All right. Then that, we will go to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience would like to speak on this case? Any come up, give your name and your address, and you've got about three minutes.
Okay. I'm Tom Reynolds, 5250 and 5260 McCandish Road. I'm here with my wife, Patricia. I came here in 1979, took Grand Blanc and purchased with my partner, the Grand Blanc News. And over the course of five or six years, we were seeking a quality-of-life home to move from Bloomfield Hills to Grand Blanc, and worked with Bill Delaney and Pat Smith, Realtor. And finally, after several years, picked a duplex home next to Joe Novajowski at 5260 McCandish Road. So we bought that part of the duplex home facing Genesee Hills Golf Course, we have a pond in the back. It was a quality-of-life decision for us and our family, so we were real happy with that decision. About twelve years ago, I purchased the others, the other duplex, which is 5250, from Hal Johnson, a veteran Marine hero, who's now passed away. I bought his side of the duplex for my daughter, Kimberly Stanbury, and her husband, Ed Stanbury, who's the track coach here at Grand Blanc High School, and is up in the Michigan Hall of Fame as a track coach. So anyway, we did not receive any notice from the planning commission at all. The only notice we received was to come here tonight at our, if we could. So we're hearing this for the first time. So we made a substantial investment by buying both duplex homes, and so we're concerned. We had the nice golf course across the street, and of course, it closed down, and it looked pretty shabby for a while, but then, you know, quality-of-life trees grew, and then it became attractive across the street from our home. So our concern is, what's going to be in front of our two homes on McCandish? What are we going to be facing? What does that do to the valuation of our investment of two homes there? This is all a surprise to us. We knew nothing about it, and we're, with the presentation that this gentleman made, we're unclear exactly what he's asking. So as good residents, good taxpayers, since that time, we bought the historic home on Belsey Road, on eleven acres, right down from the Acker spread, the Victorian home with the big green barn. So we've been good taxpayers for all these years, and we feel that we need some good answers as to exactly what is going to take place here. So we appreciate that you're digesting this, and don't make any rash decisions until everybody feels comfortable. Is this the best thing for, for Grand Blanc and for that particular property? Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I say one thing? The reason for the, you didn't know about the, the other meeting, it wasn't a public hearing, it was just an intro meeting. Anytime there's a public hearing, three-hundred-foot notices go out, so that's why you got this one for tonight and not the last one. Hmm?
Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Charles Viera, 5348 McCandish Road.
And sir, could you please spell your last name for me?
Vias and Victor, I-E-R-A.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. I don't understand the site plan of what you're doing with the Candish Road, from east, from west to east, in front of this complex. And so I'd like someone to tell me that. Because I have contacted my attorney, because I have an accident coming out of my, my family coming out of my driveway, coming up that hill. And then I don't understand when they made that forty-five miles an hour to come down in front of me, when there is no more than twelve seconds before somebody coming out of my driveway. Everybody comes out of my driveway, I make them turn around and go front, so nobody hits them. But I have to do that with every guest that comes over. Now, you come down Saginaw, I mean, McCandish, going to the east, you go down the hill, and that's right in front of that work that you're doing, okay? And I'd just like to know, what are you doing to preserve my safety? And that should have been in the plan, I don't know why you don't have it in there. Okay?
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. Now, like Mr. Smith had stated, there's, there is an order, a progress or process to these approvals. So the applicant is a long ways in making that between this board and planning commission, and we will take a look at the ordinance and consider all of the aspects, such as you're talking about with your safety, individual, traffic, all of that stuff. I'll wish you have an opportunity after a public hearing. Yes, sir.
Hi, Larry. My name's Scott Valair, and that's Vias and Victor, I-L-L-A-I-R-E. I currently live in 5475 Park Grove Court. I'm building a new house on McCandish Road, 5445. And this is news to me, this whole thing about apartment buildings going on McCandish Road. The house I'm building is about 1.6 million. I wouldn't have built a 1.6 million dollar house if I could have apartment buildings down the road from me. I, I lived in Warwick Groves before this, and now I'm moving. I growed to downsized because our kids moved out. But I'm really concerned about the traffic. I mean, you're talking about seventy-nine units, or seventy-four units, you're talking about two cars per unit, you're talking about two-hundred-and-eighty-some cars coming in here. There's no turn lanes, there's no nothing, traffic's forty-five, I can barely get across the street to my house I'm building right now. So there's a big issue there with the whole traffic pattern, and plus, this thing is, was residential, it's not multifamily. Because that would have changed a lot. My neighbor, John, built a house there last year, and we built there because we wanted three acres. And now you're talking about three acres for one residence, now you're talking about point-one-one acres for seventy-four residents or so. That's, that's, it's a huge difference. It's, it's kind of a game changer. So this is first, we knew about this, that's why I wanted to at least speak and say, hey, what's really going on here? So I know this is the variance thing, but what is Grand Blanc doing for this road? Because you've got forty-five mile an hour speed limit at one end of the road, the other end of the road. If you come out of Pine Hollow, you come out of Warwick Woods, you come out, I should say, Warwick Farms, you come out of Warwick Groves, you come out of High Grove, there's, there's no speed limit signs there at all. And, and it's just, it's just accident waiting to happen. So I'm very, very concerned that there's no plan for this township of Grand Blanc to put apartment buildings in when there's residential houses there now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, can I address one thing? That's a road commission-controlled road, so the, the township of Grand Blanc has no control over that road. So part of the planning commission process and submittals will be to Genesee County Road Commission. So that plan will be coming down the road, but that's, that's miles down the road. We, this is just the first step in a, in a long process.
Yes, sir.
Hello. My name's John Zizka, Z-I-Z-K-A, 5415 McCandish Road. I'm Scott's neighbor. I built last year. And I was Scott's neighbor before, I lived in Park Grove Court. So we moved there because of the serene look, everything else, beautiful houses down McCandish Road, okay? And I understand the, the doctor... And I understand the, the doctors' investments, okay? They're trying to get as much money out of per square acres. Why they couldn't build one-story condos like they do in Warwick or even across the street? One-story, don't, you know, I always say pigs eat and hogs get slaughtered. This is what they're doing. They're trying to get X amount of people, 79 families, holy smokes. I built in there, right down the street from where this low-income housing's going, not to have this kind of property around me. Yet, somebody makes an investment to move, he's not, he's, these doctors are not living next door. They're putting this stuff up. And I, don't get me wrong, everybody needs a house. But why you're putting 79 families, if they could go four stories and put 125 people in, they would do it. So we need to stop the insanity of this housing going in there. I get too upset thinking about this. So I just got to calm myself down. To put nice condos in, 40 of them, 20 of them, whatever, like Warwick has around their facility or right across the street, I'm for it. But to put three-story condos up, 79 families, that congestion anyways, just like they were talking about people coming down McCandish, over the Saginaw, coming down that little bit of a hill, it's nuts. People running, lights as it is, I go there every morning, every night going home. And I watch these people either texting or whatever, just flying through that thing, yet now we're going to have 79 families in there. Like, oh my goodness. So, like I said, it's very, I just love Grand Blanc Township. Why they couldn't buy this property somewhere else and put up this kind of housing, I'm for it. I saw windows, I'd love to have that project somewhere else, okay? But I don't want it next to me because of that fact. There's just too many. Let's, let's condense the number of people, the number of buildings, and make it tasteful, okay? Instead of getting 79 families in there and just more bang for the buck on these doctors' ends, okay? Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any comments on this case? Hearing none, I will close with a comment. At your R4, do you have any other comments or questions?
I have a question for Jeremy, possibly. It's zone R1 now, currently. They want to go MDM, and what is the future land use map stake?
The new future land use map that's going to be, that was approved by the Planning Commission the other day, was to put this to medium density.
So this follows with the vision of the township as presented the last master plan?
Correct. That has not been fully finalized yet, but that is, that is in the right direction for this project, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm.
I, just as the elected one on this, I'll say that I'm very sympathetic to everybody, but all we can do with this is this variance. I, we don't have any control over what the zoning is or anything like that. I understand what you're talking about in regards to the traffic, but we don't have anything we can do on that here. We're just talking about which of these, basically which of these two site plans are going to go to the Planning Commission. So I understand, and you should probably go to the next Planning Commission meeting either way and express what you're talking about, but we're just limited to this.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just before we get noticed of a planning meeting?
Um, you'll have to...
Yes. Yep, it'll be a public hearing, so yes, you will get noticed for that.
Will you plan to generate elevation, not elevation success, but we'll get, is this a good idea? How?
Well, so there's going to be a rezoning first with the, the site plan that goes with it, so yes, it will be a part of that. Yeah, if you...
Madam Chair, I can show the elevations if you'd like. And what we have, schematic?
Sure, you can do, yeah, conceptual. And I do, in the meantime, while Mr. White is getting that set up, so the question that I would have is if we deny this variance, does the whole process end here? Or he has the ability to come in and make some modifications, even if he was to come back to request a different variance?
Correct. So the way it stands today is that if it was to be denied, he couldn't come back for the exact same variance. He could come back for a different variance, let's say 20% or 30% offset instead of the 10 that he's already requested.
All right. And to kind of review the intent of the ordinance, when you're talking about the 50%, says attached building units with a 50% offset common wall. So we're looking at the ordinance requiring 50% common wall maximum. Is that correct? So that if you've got two units together, the difference in the variance that we're requesting here in the intent of the ordinance, and I guess that's what I'm asking the question, is it to reduce the amount of common wall between two residents? That would be my impression.
Oh, I think I, I think I see what you're saying. So by move, by offsetting it, you're actually reducing the percentage of common wall, of connectivity? Is she said that correctly?
Number of families.
Yes. Yeah, so right now, 50% of the wall can be common, and we're asking that 90% of the wall can be common. So we're just pushing them together. We're not asking for more, less, more families, less families. We're just asking that you can have more green space, so...
Well, it comes down to, again, the intent of the ordinance is if you have, you don't want more than 50% to be connected between two residents. So if you've got less than that, obviously you've got more wall that is shared between the two residents. That's really what it boils down to as far as what our job is.
Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, you can't. You had your opportunity. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. White and his assessment that this board tonight is looking at a dimensional variance only. So, once we make that decision, one way or the other, it's going to go back to the Planning Commission. For the Planning Commission to look at the site plan, which, which we've only seen it as an introduction meeting. I agree with Mrs. Honay and I disagree with Mrs. Honay, because I think this particular site plan is unique. And if the variance is granted, we move forward with this site plan through the Planning Commission. And it's not approved by any means. If we don't approve it, then we get moved with the one that's a sea of concrete. I can only reiterate that the Planning Commission liked the grass better. So although it is this board's challenge as a variance, I truly believe we need to look at the site plan, because we are voting on what this is going to look like. And again, I think it's backwards. And I think Jeremy spoke with, you know, the pile of work he's got ahead of him in the next six months to a year to, you know, make everything correct. So I think there's two challenges here tonight for this board. By no means, for the people in the audience that spoke, I also sympathize too, and all those concerns are major concerns of the Planning Commissioners too. And they will be looked at, not only at this board level, but at the site plan review meetings that are only with two or three people, the Planning Commission, and then site plan is really tweaked. So there's, there's lots of stuff, as our attorney said, to continue on this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, and I'm not trying to, maybe I'm just dense or I'm missing this, but I'm, your comment about the, the common wall, I'm having trouble, I'm looking at the, at the ordinance language, and it says attached single-family dwelling units are permitted as principal permitted uses in the LDR, MDR, and HTR districts, subject to the following. So I get that attached, single-family, connected, single-family units are allowed in the, in those zoning districts, subject to not more than 50% of any wall, any adjoining wall, maybe a common party wall for adjacent units. I'm, I'm having trouble visualizing that language. Is that what, I mean, is that the problem you had? And I know Mr. Fedora, he probably has a, a way to get that through my thick skull, but I'm...
The way you just read that, it sounds to me like we don't even need a variance. It says up to 18, up to 50% of the wall can be common, so can it be less than that? That's what I just heard.
I believe that the ordinance says not more than.
It says not more than.
Not more than.
50%, not more than 50% of any wall.
Not more than 50% can be common, so then 10% could be common.
No, this is going to be 90% common. This is the other way.
All right, all right, all right. Thank you.
Do you, am I...
No, that's, the way you just explained it is exactly right.
Okay. Okay. All right, as long, as long as you guys got it in your heads and you understand exactly what you want to...
All right. Any other discussions, gentlemen?
I, I'll make some, another note, given that there's a significant green space thing in this, Saginaw and McCandish, and I get that this does not immediately about it, but it's certainly in the vicinity. As someone whose office is on the other side, I'll note that there's often a lot of flooding. In fact, the right-hand lane, the westernmost lane on Saginaw, close to McCandish, is often closed when we get a lot of, a lot of rainfall because of flooding there. So I'm, I guess, I think it's, anything that puts more green space and less impervious substance in that vicinity is probably going to alleviate the flooding to some extent. So, and given that that's all we're essentially looking at today, I think that is, has not really been commented on yet, but I think that's a significant issue from a practical standpoint, the kind of repeated flooding there on Saginaw Street.
Well, I also feel that if they wanted to add more green space, they could. They don't have to have 79 or 74 units. They can cut that in half and get a lot of green space out of it.
Yes, so, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, so, tonight, we're not locked into one plan or another, if I'm not mistaken, right? What we're meeting about tonight is the variance for whether or not they have identified one of these, you know, practical difficulty, a unique situation, whether it was self-created or not. Those are all the things that we have to take into account before we actually, when we look at the variance of whether or not they need to be together, right? Right on top of each other, or whether they're separated back and forth with a 50% wall? So I guess, I answer my own question then, so, but anyway, we're not, we don't have to actually, we're not picking one or the other. If we, if we deny this variance this evening, it doesn't mean that the other plan is going to, that's just the way it's going to be, right?
Right. It is a conceptual, as far as the way that the plan can be designed.
Okay.
Ultimately, is going to be...
And vice versa. If we pass it tonight, it doesn't necessarily mean that this is going to be the plan either, correct?
Correct. Correct. Yeah.
Madam Chair, Mr. Laddie, should we be looking at this after the Planning Commission?
Well, I think...
Unless they, if they'd get a result, seems like that's a bigger step, getting a rezoning than four-foot variance.
It is a bigger step. You're exactly right. But what, what they want to do is they want to come to the Plan, they want to, they want to come to the Planning Commission and ultimately the Township Board, so Mr. White's going to get an opportunity to be a part of this again. But they want to come to the, to the Township Board and the Planning Commission with a plan, with something that they're willing to commit themselves to that says, hey, we want this rezoning specifically for this, this plan design. And their position is, in order to do that, they want to be able, they want to know if they can submit a plan that looks like what they're asking for, as opposed to something that they don't prefer to take. But the reason is, they're, they're shaping up their drawing right now to take to the Planning Commission and the Township Board. And Mr. Thompson, you're exactly right. The bigger step from, from a land use perspective will be, will be the Planning Commission meeting, and then also the subsequent Township Board meeting. This is really a function of design, frankly.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to touch base one thing, what Jeremy said earlier on conditional zoning, and so everybody knows what conditional zoning is. If, if the Planning Commission zones a piece of property from, say, R1 to MDM, or R1 to, say, commercial, then, once it's zoned commercial, then the applicant or whoever had it rezoned can get our zoning ordinance, and any use that's allowed by ordinance can go on this piece of property. The applicant here has said he wants to do conditional zoning. So if this, if the Planning Commission decides that it's time to rezone this piece of property, it's zoned conditionally. So if they vary from that site plan, it can't be built. They have to build what they tell us, or nothing can be built. So it's a little different than a standard rezoning where anything can be built, it only can be built what they're asking for. So just so everybody understands what conditional rezoning is.
Thank you. Would enter to a motion or additional discussion?
I would, I would make the motion, I guess, to approve the variance, given what we have been discussing in regards to why the, they need less than the 50, or more than the 50% of the common wall. I believe that, I, I don't know, I'm struggling here to come up with the reasoning, but I guess my motion would be to approve it.
Madam Chair, before you go forward, just note that there's six items that they have to meet. If they don't meet those items, I mean, you, you guys can make the motion as you see fit, but just reiterating...
Are you comfortable with that?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Do I have a support? If I have support, then we can have additional discussion if you'd like. Any support of Mr. White's motion to approve?
I'll support for discussion purposes.
All right. Support time, Mr. Bush. Any additional discussion?
So my, my thought on these, this is, again, I got to go back to what was, you know, the conditions for even granting a variance. And then, get the green space or no green space, you know, that is, you know, you know, that's not necessarily something that we need to discuss here. You know, they can add as much green space as they'd like moving forward. I don't really think that the green space has a bearing on the variance and whether or not they hit the categories.
I, I think if, if we, if we look at these six items, it's a no. Okay? The zoning ordinance is a tool for us to utilize to develop our community. So when you look at green space, and like you said, I personally think this is, is backwards as Mr. Thompson did. The Planning Commission saw this, just to review it as an introduction, the Planning Commission recommended to the applicant to bring this plan to this body as the plan we liked, because we looked at green space. We looked at the sea of concrete that this body is not charged with looking at. And that, this is the plan we sent to you. So I guess this is the plan the Planning Commission wants to see. If we deny it, Planning Commission's not going to see what we asked for. And that's, it's that plain and simple.
Well, I feel that there's a lot more options that can be explored. So any other discussion as far as the motion that's on the table? Mr. Laddie, did you want to add something?
No, just that, I mean, I, and I understand, I understand the equitable arguments that are being made, and, and they're, you know, they make sense. And we get that here, right? We get people that come in and they say, they come in and they want to do something for a reason, and they tell us why. Most of the time, it makes sense. We have to go through, we still have to go through those findings and make sure that they meet the requirements. And you have a, you have a report from Mr. Smith that, that points out that, that it appears that they don't meet that. And you guys are the deciders of whether or not it meets that or not. But you, you need to find affirmatively. And you, and so, what it means is... And you, and so what it means is you're, you've got a more strict standard for review rather than, does it make sense or do I like it or is it the best option? You guys have a little bit harder road to hoe as far as that is concerned. And so you do need to pay attention to the, to the criterion.
One more question for the attorney then. Let, let's just grab a scenario. This variance gets denied. The applicant shows up at the Planning Commission with the plan we didn't like. The Planning Commission denies it. The future land use map says MDM. The likelihood of going to court and losing because we rezoned it MDM in the future and it's in our book is highly likely.
That is all, it's possible, but that isn't, that isn't something you guys are going to be thinking about tonight.
I understand that we're not supposed to think about that, but I'm just, that's the reality of what's going on.
Something I think about as a trustee, though. I mean, I can't deny that I'm not thinking about two steps down the road and what the township is going to have. I mean, I can't not do that.
I mean, this body didn't rezone that to MDM. I'm only three months on the Planning Commission, so I was not part of the new master plan. I've been part of master plans in the past.
Right.
So the reasoning they put that as MDM, there's got to be a reason for it.
Well, yeah, and so the Planning Commission will have, the Planning Commission will have that discussion, I assume, and that analysis, because they are the ones that, that approved the master plan. The master plan as proposed wasn't approved by the Township Board. And so that will be something that will be discussed at the Township Board level because at the Planning Commission, whatever they recommend, it will still go to the Township Board for decision. So all of those things are true. And whatever path, whatever likely path it's going to take or whatever possible path it takes, those are all, you guys are all saying exactly the correct thing. It's, it's just, though, that you're at, you're in this, you're in this EBA review phase and you've got your, you've got your criteria and you've got your facts.
Okay, so we still have a motion on the table to approve and there's no additional discussion, then I will do a roll vote. Everybody's okay? Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mrs. Hone is no? Mr. Johnson?
No.
And Mr. Bush?
Yes.
All right. The motion fails, 3 to 2. All right, moving on, this is Lena's business.
Thank you.
None, no future business?
None.
Uh, many reports at this time, and I would enter the motion to adjourn.
Moved. I'll support it. Third.
All right, we've got Thompson and Bush. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.